Okay, let's do roll call.
Okay, Andrew Franklin.
Carla Pennington Cross.
Ben Wen, are you present?
Yes, I am.
And Danielle Bailey may be here, but she's excused. She may be on a plane and doesn't have wifi. Okay, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Andy Franklin.
Second.
Seconded by Ben Wen. Discussion, now just kidding again. Okay, we are back into open session. It is 6:24 and we're gonna make a motion for recess for six minutes until 6:30 when we can start the regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ben Wen. I'm gonna second that motion by Tamika Hugovich, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We are in recess till 6:30. Karen, can you make me a co-host? Karen, can you make me a co-host, please?
Yep, give me a second.
Thank you. I have a flag. So we can do our flag stuff. All right, sorry, it is 6:31. We are back in session. We are on, where are we here?
1D.
Hold on, let me look, I might get there. Pledge of Allegiance, and since I have flag here. I had a flag here. Can anybody see my flag?
Lovely.
Can you see the flag?
Yes.
Yes. 6:19.
Who would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Anyone volunteer? All right, let's just start then. The pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United
States of America.
To the Republic of which it stands.
One nation under God. With liberty and justice All right, may I have two, let's see, we're on 1E, agenda approval. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Hold on, I'm getting rid of the.
So my question about the consent agenda.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, right? One second. I am trying to I have lost all everything when it has to do with this my Zoom, I can't see anything. There we go. So we had a who was the motion to approve the consent agenda? I mean, to approve the
Agenda. That was I.
That was Andy, do we have a second?
The move, or second?
Second by Ben, all in favor to approve the agenda?
Wait, but Carla had a question, so.
My consent agenda question is for later?
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
All in favor to approve the consent agenda, I mean, the agenda, please say aye.
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 Motion is four to zero, it approved, it's approved. Oh my god, what is going on? I'm sorry, I am having the worst day for technology and I apologize. Okay, now we are in the overall view of visitor participation. We're gonna do this for the first couple of sessions going into until people get the notion of our visitor participation. This is how visitor participation will go. We will start out with going through our agenda. We will get the executive summary. We will make a motion. Once the motion is in, we will ask anyone in the audience or on the Zoom if they have a particular comment to say about this particular agenda item. Once that happens, we will close that. We will go into discussion with the board and then we'll vote on the the motion. It will not be a back and forth, so that's that, and that's for each item that we go through on the agenda. At the end of our of our agenda, we do have another visitor participation, and that is when anyone can speak on a non-agenda item. If they wanna like tell us something that they want to talk about at another meeting, or they have a concern that we did not have on our agenda, that is the time to do that. Okay, let's go. We're on to a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to pass for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
This is where there should be, this is where there should be a so moved but would like to pull out.
So I want to pull out item E, approval of new hires, just to be able to ask a couple of questions.
Okay. So we are pulling out E, we will discuss that after we have a vote on the consent agenda. So the consent agenda consists of, what does it consist of? Financials, minute approval, approval of regulations, and seclusion and restraint report, and the notice of academic standards. I think that is it.
School nurse report.
Did I miss one? Thank you. Oh, H, school nurse report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's a four to zero. Motion approved. Now let's go to item E for I need a a motion to approve the new hires.
So moved.
Moved by Andy Franklin.
Second.
Seconded by Carla Pennington Cross. We'll let well, and usually we would go into the executive summary, but let's ask your question.
Yeah, so they were just a couple of questions. One was with the counselor hire, whether current SEL staff were able to participate interviews because there's a new counselor hire on there, right?
Yes. Yes.
So everyone, everyone participated through the summer, huh?
Yeah, so basically what happened was they did the round when we were hiring for one counselor, and so the team was a part of that process, and then when we received news that we were hiring for two counselors, they just went to the second choice.
So is this the second, this is the second counselor being hired now, so we've now hired two.
I believe so. Lindsay, are they both on there? Sorry, I've no idea.
Oh, am I? No, the second one is still under contract with her former, like the other one, so this is just the first one that we're bringing.
Sorry about that. I knew that there was a recommendation, so we're working on the second one, but it was the same team including SEL staff, yes.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. So there wasn't a new round of interviews. It was got it?
Exactly.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay. All in favor of approving the new hires, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We are on moving along to department updates. Take it away, Allison.
I can't tell if, oh, you know what? I wonder if I have to text them.
That Dr. Smith is on as well as
Okay. Do you see Anna too?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't see them on my screen. So I just wanted to start with, this is just continuing some of our dialogue around, it's sort of a two-pronged thing, there's the 100-day plan pieces, and our focus after sale, and then there was the other piece around behavior and concerns out of a couple of board meetings and then out of some staff conversations and staff rounding and some staff exit interviews around student behavior. So that had prompted both schools to create behavior committees. I just wanted to mention that this is just the beginning. So just like student teachers will start with routines and procedures and structure at the beginning of the year, that's the focus right now for the administrative team, but by no way do we believe this is the end of the work, it's just the very beginning. We just know that staff and students have to feel safe in order to do that heavy lifting that's going to come next as we continue throughout the school year. So I know that their safety plans were uploaded, and we had a meeting not too long ago where we were trying to talk in vague terms, and the board felt it would be helpful to just see the safety plans, so those were provided, and then I'll just kind of let you guys, I don't know if Dr. Smith and Ms. Young have anything to say as an introduction, or if you guys want to ask questions, or how you want to go through this piece of the agenda. Oh, you're muted, Tamika, sorry.
This is a a discussion item, so I guess this is just, we don't have a motion here. Do we have anything that the board would, what would start with just a quick overview from Dr. Smith and then a quick overview from Ms. Young, and then the board can ask questions?
Sure. So hi, good evening, it's Dr. Smith here. So one of the things that we did this year is we surveyed our staff and asked staff if they would like to be a part of a culture committee. And we realized that culture is kind of building that foundation and having a positive school culture is really the foundation to the success in terms of social, emotional development and academic development. And so we had a group of educators come together who wanted to participate on the culture committee, who came together to kind of identify what are some look-for's, some things that we can do together as a school-wide initiative to continue to reinforce the important aspect of building a school community and school culture. And what we did was we came up, the team came up with five character words that together we agreed that we would have kind of be the premise and the foundation moving forward in terms of implementing the character words into our school-wide morning meetings, as well as implementing them into our classroom meetings. And I think it's really important just to take a little step back and to think about children at the primary level in terms of our early childhood learners through our third-grade learners, and just realizing that our children developmentally, they really do thrive off of, you know, kind, engaging, respectful, and nurturing classroom and school-wide environments. And having said that, it's up to us as adults to be able to set those very clear expectations and to be able to collaborate and to interact with children to help develop and support some guidelines, which is where I think Allison alluded to earlier when she talked about some of the behaviors, and just realizing that at this age, we're really striving to model the characteristics that we're looking for to help to help the children become successful, independent, young people, and we do that through a lot of examples and discussions. Again, we look for those teachable moments during the day where we find ourselves in situations that allow us to be able to define some of the courses of actions that we're taking along with building that character. And so, again, we came together as a climate committee to talk, one of the things we, and I should back up for just a minute, one of the things that we noticed is when students came back during the 21-22 school year, there were still some areas of growth that we as an overall school organization needed to work on. And one of the things that we noticed is that we still needed to continue to amp up the support for each other as adults and as colleagues, as well as support our families and support our students. And one of the things that was lagging a little bit was some of those areas of social development. And so, again, coming together as a committee and being able to kind of identify, if you will, five areas, five main focuses, five pillars, whatever it is that you'd like to call them, character words, to really ground us in our work together. And so that's kind of what we're gonna use, and we talked about when we come together in staff meetings, coming back to those five words. Talking about ways that we can implement them into our morning meetings and into our lessons. So again, looking at that SEL component and building upon that and integrating that into our academic environments as well, because one thing we believe as educators is that if students feel good about themselves and feel like they are in a safe nurturing space, then the learning is much easier to develop and foster the love of learning in children. So from that, we then came together and also talked about some of the revisions that we needed to see going forward and implemented them into our family caregiver handbook, and I think the board all got a copy of the handbook. I don't know, Tamika, is now a good time to go over some of the changes that I implemented between the two years, or would you like me to stop and?
I don't know. I would love to hear it.
Okay.
Just, just go over the, we always, we always want to know what you've changed and what are some of the highlights that you you implemented?
Yeah.
You don't have to go through the whole handbook, just the stuff that has been changed or highlighted.
Gotcha, sounds good. Okay, so at Parkway, we talked about staff and students being proud to be a part of the school and demonstrating our Parkway pride through our actions, and so our students and staff will continue to demonstrate Panther pride by exhibiting kindness, being problem solvers, demonstrating perseverance, accepting responsibility, and displaying honesty, and that was one of the things that came out of the climate committee, but is a change from the 21-22 school year where we really based our character words off of CARES, and CARES is just another acronym that stands for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. And what we noticed is as a school environment, those words had been around for a number of years, but we weren't actually delving into the meaning, the definition behind them, modeling what that means for students. What does that mean in terms of character and really fostering those words? And so what we wanted was something that we could come together to agree upon as a school community that we thought would be beneficial to our overall school community in terms of both staff and students. So that was a change. Another change is in the handbook, I talked a little bit more in regards to what, or things that I added to the handbook this year was a section on injuries and what to do if there's an injury. Also put in and implemented safety drills, as well as a little bit more information in terms of devices. Again, being the age that we are at Parkway, we don't necessarily have as many issues around social media and communication and cell phones. But just put a little blurb in there around devices, and then one thing that I noticed is every once in a while, there are some devices that, like gaming devices, that make their way into the school, so I just put a little blurb in there around devices. And then I think probably the biggest change within the handbook this year is that I edited a piece on the chain of communication. Again, just kind of looking at trends and thinking about the past few years, what I've noticed is that there's been a large number of families who either come directly to the board when wanting to ask clarifying questions or need additional direction or support, and sometimes we as administrators aren't aware that there's a need by parents, and so just going through kind of the chain of communication and laying that out for parents to please start with the classroom teacher, the person that they probably have developed the most extensive relationship and rapport with, and to be able to have direct communication and conversation with the classroom teacher, and if after having that communication, there are still additional questions or additional support that's needed by families or by the student being able to come and talk to us, the school administrators, and if for some reason we as school administrators are not able to help resolve an issue or help answer questions, then what we would do is we would reach out to Allison as the superintendent and have her be able to have those direct lines of communications with families. And then if Allison is in a, in a space and a place in which she feels that she would like additional support, having her be the one that reaches out directly to the school board. That way, what it does is it opens up the flow of communication and the lines of communication, and really allows the family to be able to vent their additional, or I'm sorry, their initial concern or issue directly to the classroom teacher, and then has steps that kind of elevate until you get to the top. But it keeps all of us in that, in the loop in terms of the communication. So that was something new that was added to the handbook, and then the other, the last thing that I did was I placed, at Parkway, we practice responsive classroom practices, which is really our school-wide system around behaviors and addressing behaviors, again, developmentally appropriate practices, looking at giving students a number of opportunities to help address a behavior. So starting with take a break, and then moving to a buddy room, and then perhaps meeting with the school counselor, then the school principal, and then maybe us meeting with the families, and so there's kind of layers and steps, but again, it's really focused on what we can do to help the student to be successful and giving them multiple opportunities to develop in the areas of social growth. So having said that, we developed, and this has actually been in place, but I realized it wasn't in the handbook last year, so a change to this year's handbook was putting in the Parkway expectations, our Panther pride, so it starts with kind of looking at our voice level, oftentimes when we refer to students in regards to their voice volume, we work through a level zero, which is no talking, all the way up to a level four, which is like you would go outside and you would talk, be able to be really loud and express yourself, and then the next page focuses in on the overall expectations in different spaces throughout the building. For example, within the hallway, within the bathroom, the lunchroom, at recess, what it looks like in the bus lines, what it looks, looks like in the parent pickup lines, and then there's just visual models because the core of responsive classroom deals a lot with what do things look like, sound like, and feel like, so the kids can attach meaning to it and and make that connection with the expectation, and so you'll see there's like the eye, the ear, and the heart, which are the symbols that all the classrooms have. So all of the classroom have these So all of the classroom have these visual models hanging up within their classrooms too. So there's an opportunity to reinforce and to practice across the school. And then again, like I said, it, we then implemented into our monthly school-wide morning meetings and into our our classroom meetings, which they have on a daily basis. So those were probably the newest additions that I made to the handbook.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Can't hear you. Can't hear you, Tamika. Can't hear you.
Yeah, you're muted again, Tamika.
Technical difficulty. Anna, can you go next? All right, do you have any questions for Dr. Smith?
I have a couple of questions. Anyone else want to go first?
Go ahead, Carla.
Okay, um, so I'm just curious, Dr. Smith. I know you invited participation in the culture committee. I'm curious to hear what the response was, whether staff stepped up, what kind of participation level you had. You know, a little information about the committee.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, there were a number of staff that stepped up. And I feel like we were grateful because we had a number of people in various areas. So not just grade level classroom teachers, but also members of our allied arts team, members of our our therapist and and allied arts team. I don't know if I just said that, I felt like I did, but of our grade level and allied arts team. So, yeah, so there's just a wide array of people, which obviously makes the discussion really, it's it's really rich discussion when we come together because we're all bringing various perspectives and different lens. Part of that is just our experiences in the areas that we specialize in. And then, you know, how do we come together as a school-wide community to support all of our students and their families? So, yeah, we had, we had some really great discussions. And there are a number of people on the team, and we've already met a couple of times. I know they were even willing to come in over the summer and meet some more. So, we feel like we're off to a great start.
Are are you going to continue to meet that committee? That, is that committee going to continue to meet throughout the school year?
Yes, yes, it is. So we used to have what was called team leaders. And we moved away from team leaders because what we found is that what we would discuss in terms of topics as a part of a team leader committee are things that then we'd go back and share with the larger audience. And typically, that would come out either in my weekly Panther presses to the staff or in staff meetings or in grade level team meetings. Nonetheless, it was almost like we'd have a meeting to meet and then go back and share out the exact same information. And so, we thought, you know, instead of doing that, here's this opportunity for members of the team to be able to go back and to share with their teams and to kind of streamline the process. So when we come together as a whole staff for staff meetings, people can begin to ask questions and begin to delve deeper into the work.
Have you thought about having, inviting any like family participation? Like caregiver representation on the committee?
Yes, not, not at this time. We really felt as though we needed to come together as a staff. Again, it's almost like having the pandemic, assuming nothing and needing to reteach everything, including to us as adults, that that idea that we create a safe space for us to just come together and be able to have some open dialogue and and some discussions. And so, right now, the focus really is for us as a staff and wanting to ensure that we're a cohesive unit and collectively that we're doing what's in the best interest of students and moving together, moving forward together. So really, our initial primary focus at this time is really just on the staff coming together.
Okay. Yeah, I would anticipate, you know, from the rumblings I hear that with the culture committee sounds great. I think eventually you're going to find family, you know, caregivers asking about it and wondering about participation. So I would just plan for that, I would imagine. And whether you want to eventually do something like that, that engages families in that conversation.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you so much. And the other thing I wanted to mention that I just, I just noticed it because we were just thinking about the SST director. I see that the admin team is listing in the handbook as a director of spec ed. So hopefully, that can more accurately reflect student services team director, right? Or is that gonna? You know what I mean? It's a special ed director, but we're hiring, hiring a student services team director, student services and spec ed director, right? So I I I hope that can be just edited so that, you know, anyone looking at that from Park A will know that 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 person has a broader role than just spec ed.
Dr. Smith, did you get that? There's must be a typo on the admin list.
No, but, yep, no, I I got exactly what she's saying. What I did was I wrote a question mark in the handbook and then wrote Director of Special Education without adding the second part of the title. And so, yep, it is noted.
Okay. Thank you, Hi Day.
Thank you.
Mute again.
Sorry, I'm having a problem because I have a double screen and for some reason I keep losing my mouse. So, okay, Anna, well, do you, I don't know if you want to go through a presentation or what you have have changed, but do you want to do that? Or do you want that, Carla, or do you want just to ask specific questions?
I'm always happy to hear. I'm always happy to hear from anyone who wants to tell us what's going on.
All right, I can go ahead and start and just kind of talk through some of the changes to the handbook. So, one of the the key areas, obviously, last school year, you know, pending some challenges posed by the pandemic. And at Glen Hills last school year in particular, we started a scholar expectation committee. And that was comprised of representation from every grade level as well as every allied arts music department, as well as our physical education department. And so, are also our SST team, Ms. Davis came to some of our meetings and also Dr. Rodriguez. So, as we worked through taking a look at the work, we really took a look at two different models. We had, teachers went and researched and looked at different, different models of school-wide systems. So, really what we ended up, hold on, I'm sorry, give me what, just one moment, please. All right, I apologize. So what we took a look at is really this, this idea of school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports as being a way to get at some of the clarity around expectations for students and really taking a proactive stance of letting students know what what we need from them and really developing tiered systems of support for students as well as really looking at restorative practices as well because that also fit the lens of of our teacher, our teachers' belief systems around some of those pieces. In addition to this, we had meetings with our family advisory council as well. So getting and hearing from the voices of families around some of these issues and really thinking about the fact that parents are seeking the idea around making sure that we're teaching students and not excluding them and that we want high levels of accountability, but also there's an important need to focus on relationships and social emotional learning with with our students. So, just to kind of forefront the handbook and to just lay out the context around that. The handbook is really a guide to outline policies and practices. I don't feel like it encompasses the intricate web of collaborative work that is done within the school context to support a positive school culture. So it's really just a guide for our families to be able to see what some of those board policies are as well as some of the procedural pieces that are a part of school in at Glen Hills. It has also used some of the, some of the information that's contained in it is used school-wide by teachers to help teach expectations for students. So, one of the things that we did is we added some core values to the Glen Hills Way. And the the purpose of that was as you look at developing school-wide systems of intervention and support, you really want to take a look at how you're framing those conversations with students. And so, we wanted to make sure that it was positively stated, easy-to-remember expectations that align with creating a positive school culture and climate. So, the Glen Hills Way states that we are a community in which everyone takes responsibility for challenging themselves to learn and grow. So we focused on responsibility as a key characteristic. And we also have that we are a community that respects ourselves, others, and the school community through our words and work. So we chose respect as another key area to focus in on. And then, and those are, and I will say those are very common traits that are assigned to school-wide positive behavior intervention systems. The other area that our team thought was very important was that of inclusion. And so, we also state that we're a community that welcomes, includes, affirms, and celebrates individual differences and that we're a community that builds trusting relationships through honest and positive interactions. So we wanted to focus on inclusion. So responsibility, respect, and inclusion are those key guiding characteristics that were added to the Glen Hills Way. So that was a shift. Our daily schedule was updated due to our new schedule that will be presented with next school year. We also changed some of the course offerings so that it reflected the addition of a STEAM course as well as the additional music offerings for the school year as students will have the ability to choose choir, orchestra, band, or general music with a world music focus. We did do a change to our cell phone policy. And I do want to just kind of shift on that. Obviously, the use of cell phones at the middle school level is very different than the elementary school. So wanting to create a respectful school environment that's focused on learning and face-to-face interactions. So, I just want to highlight some of the changes that were made there. So as we looked at the cell phone policy from our board policy book, it indicates that cell phones should be kept in their lockers during the school day and not used without staff approval. In our work with the teachers on the committee, if they felt very strongly that cell phones should be kept in, kept in lockers, following board policy is that has been something that has worked in prior practice in years previously. We also feel that this would be undoable piece this year because students will resume using their lockers three times a day where we were not doing that because of COVID restrictions in the past. That backpacks and jackets will also remain in lockers, which is also an increased safety measure. And that we also had the opportunity this summer, and this work has already been done, that telephones were restored in each of our classrooms. So each teacher has a classroom phone, making it easier for the staff to communicate with stu, with teachers in their classrooms, making it easier for parents to call the front office and get ahold of their children. But then also for the safety of teachers needing to call for assistance as well as just ease of, if a child needs to call home to a parent, there is better access there. Also, in board policy as well as the the cell phone policy that is listed in the handbook, it is very clear that if a student needs to use their cell phone to contact a parent via text, because maybe a parent can't, you know, utilize a phone during their workday, that they may do so, they just need to ask for an adult, either a staff member or an administrator to see if they can make that call. We also added in progressive consequences that allow students to develop more personal responsibility. So rather than just, you know, a strict removal of the phone, there's kind of like, hey, the first time it just comes to the office, it goes home with you. The second time we call a parent to pick it up. The third time, we look at working with students and families to say like, can we develop a contract for responsible use and really try to get at like, why? Why is it that we need to use the phone more? And why, why do we feel like we can't have it in a locker so that we could get at some of those reasons and really work with the family to come up with a viable solution? And then, you know, really helping students, you know, make sure that they're focused on their work and and working with families because every situation poses a different, a different lens. But that really working on getting the cell phone to be kept in the locker. There were a couple of changes made to the dress and attire. Last year, our phone book, our, excuse me, our handbook read that all shirts and tops must cover the upper body area, including midriff and cleavage area. We struck including midriff and cleavage area so that none of the codes could promote any kind of reinforcement that would be gendered or could lead to any kind of body shaming. Additionally, there was a line that shorts and skirts should be modest in length. And that was taken out just to say that students need to have, to have their undergarments covered with sitting, standing, or bending, again, to remove any gendered language from the dress code. We also added in the behavior matrix. The Glen Hills Behavior Matrix was developed by the Scholar Expectation Committee as a tool to insist the entire school community to establish common language and identified universal goals for behavior across settings. So the matrix identifies all areas of the schools. So classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, you know, buses and locker rooms and gym, gymnasium and library to really say like, what is that stated expectation? The goal of the matrix will serve as a resource and teaching tool for school-wide expectations. And teachers will then, in addition to this, have the opportunity to develop agreements in conjunction with their students for their classrooms at the start of the school year. The goal of the matrix is really to make sure that all staff members and all students and parents have a clear expectation of of what those universal behaviors are so that we can work to adhere towards them. Additionally, there was an addition of a behavior response and support matrix. So the SEC committee defined the behaviors to support a school-wide understanding so that we would have the consistent behavior responses, interventions, and supports that can be put into place at the classroom and office levels. So it defines student behavior so that staff has a clear idea of sort of in our conversations, like what do we, what do we, what do we call behaviors? So what does non-compliance look like? What is the definition of frequency? What is the definition of chronicity? So that we are all very clear when we're using those terms with students, with families, and with one another. And then, the other concept was that when students express behavior, that we need to respond to that behavior, but there also needs to be a, a social emotional response, which means that we put in supports. So each of the behaviors, there is a listing of potential social emotional supports that can be put into place as well as a response to the behavior and a restorative component. And so, what, what the goal of this is, is that there's consistency. So when there are infractions in behavior, there is clarity around what happens next for students, for families, and for staff. And that we are minimizing any exclusionary practices such as suspension and expulsion due to the fact that school data within Glen Hills and nationwide shows that there's an over-representation of Black and African-American students and the nationwide Latino students as well. So really working at practices that teach, but also have high levels of accountability to students. And to to guide that work, I have been working with two different organizations to support teacher training around restorative practices as well. So that, those are the major changes to the book at Glen Hills.
Okay, Ben, I know you had a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I I like the cell phone policy and the consequences that are written out. But I guess this is, I I just, I'm wondering what the consistent response to seeing a cell phone will be. So if a teacher sees a student with a cell phone, what are they going to do? Are they going to take the cell phone from the student? Or are they going to contact administration and say, hey, the student has a cell phone? And then administration will come and confiscate the phone?
It was very clear in our meeting, in our scholar expectation committee meeting, that our teachers did not want to be the people to take cell phones due to the liability around property as well as the fact that their, their role is not to engage with students around the phone and as they're teaching. So, it is clearly lined out that that would become an office referral so that it would come to administration and an administrator would go and confiscate the phone and handle that situation so that teachers And an administrator would go and confiscate the phone and handle that situation so that teachers can focus on teaching.
Okay, so the administrator would come up at some point and take it. It wouldn't be, they would send the student down to the office right away.
Yeah, we would try to come up to the classroom to take it. Obviously, if there's, it, it, you know, a situation context may look different. But yes, we would, we would seek, because if we can come up there and work with, work with the student in that, in that space and get them back to the learning environment, that would be the most helpful.
Okay. And then they would just contact you via text or email or something like that?
They would utilize, they would utilize an office referral system and use, and use, and use the phone to call the office for so, for an administrator.
Okay. Okay, then also, so I like how you separated classroom behaviors that the teacher takes care of versus office managed behavior. So my question is, with the teacher response, what's the consistent response they go to? Or what's the go-to tool that the teachers have? Because I know, you know, when Dr. Smith was at Glen Hills, I'm pretty sure it was to take a break chair. So it'd be like one redirection, then you'd have a second redirection. Then on the third one, they'd go take a break in the classroom. And then if that didn't work, then it was a buddy room. And that, you know, that's great because the kid stays in the classroom and usually it works. So I'm, so anyway, so that, I mean, I'm not saying that, that's, you know, what you have to do or whatnot. But I'm just wondering, what's that go-to tool that every teacher is going to use? So that kids kind of know walking into the classroom, like, you know, this, this is the basic tool the two, uh, teacher's going to use.
Um, so as laid out in the behavior sport and response matrix, so it would be restating the expectation to students. Rather than, there's a lot of value in, in those moments to restate what's expected versus telling a student what they did wrong. Because that opens the door to, to a power struggle, right? Previewing and saying, you know, you know, for, and we'll provide teachers with language around this. So then you would preview what, what comes next, right? Some corrective feedback. So reteach the appropriate skill. And then if possible, like, you know, a step of the hallway, try to, to facilitate reentry. The use of restorative practice circles in classes potentially, a behavior think sheet. And then a class, like, looking also at positives, like class passes as an incentive and positive behavior contract with incentives. So working through, you know, some of those things that are not in the moment, but on the backend as a teacher that you can do. But in the moment, it would be restating the expectation, previewing, and then doing the corrective feedback and reteaching.
And what if that doesn't work?
Um, there is, it is very clear in there that if the, the intensity of the behavior escalates and we develop, we defined the intensity in there as low intensity is being able to self-regulate after redirection. So if there is not the ability to do that and it becomes a high-intensity behavior, then it moves to an office referral.
Okay, so the teacher would send the student to the office then? Okay. Uh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I read it, so I, I know it's written in there. So, okay, because it said that, you know, low intensity would be within two minutes or something like that. So I guess, I mean, again, I, I think, I think what you have written here is, you know, pretty good. Because, you know, for the various reasons I've said, you know, you separate classroom managed behaviors and office managed behaviors. But what was, what is a restorative practice circle?
So retard, restorative practices would seek to repair harm. So restorative circles can be used in many different ways. So they can be used as a community building tool within the classroom. They can also be used as a, hey, we need to take a break. We're, we're having a moment in which we need to talk about our norms and expectations in the classroom because we're struggling to meet those right now and we want to make sure everybody can be a part of our learning community. So there are structured circles that can help do that. Sometimes they're used to repair harm. Something along repairing harm would likely happen in a more private context with those people who have been directly harmed. But sometimes it may be an opportunity for, if there was a big behavior in a classroom, for there to be the ability to talk about how that made people feel, how they were impacted, and how we can support one another going forward. And how the person who caused that harm can also take ownership for it and help to repair it so they can come back to the classroom. So that would be done in more of, uh, when you're repairing harm, that would be done in a more facilitated way. But used in the classroom to build community and to revisit norms would be something that would happen more at the classroom level.
Okay, so, okay, so I guess my only feedback on that is, I think there, so that, I mean, that's all good. But I think there needs to be something in there that's in the moment, like what are teachers going to do in the moment? And again, what Glen Hills did, I think maybe, I don't know how many years ago, it'd be now seven, eight years ago, the take a break thing. I mean, and every teacher does that in the moment. That keeps a lot of kids in the classroom. Because it kind of sounds like, well, after the second or maybe third redirection, the kid might get sent to the office. So that, that's, I mean, again, I'm not there every day, you know. But that would be my only feedback to maybe consider writing down something in there where it's, what are teachers going to do in the moment? Because, you know, yeah, talking to the student afterwards and all that, that, I mean, that's important. But, you know, what the teacher's teaching is also really important, as you know. So I'm, and that's my only feedback on that. And I think that's pretty much it from my questions. I just saw something in the office managed behavior. And I know it's hard to get super specific here, so maybe it's not really possible. But, you know, you know, you had the first infraction, second infraction, and then additional infract, you know, infractions. And sometimes, you know, with the additional infractions, it's saying, well, let's revisit the steps from the first violation or whatnot. And, you know, that could end up being an endless cycle. So what, like, what, what would you do if something like, you know, chronic non-compliance? What, what would you do if that's like a, um, if that's like a cycle that continues to occur?
So I, in, uh, in the first and second infractions, it's, there's a revisiting of steps. But then there's also additional steps that are put into place. And so when it says in here that an administrator, family caregiver, student services member will develop a scholar contract. Right now, when we move towards, um, when we move towards pre-expulsion of a behavior that isn't necessarily expellable, we usually work towards a student contract with certain contingencies that coupled with some of the social emotional learning supports, to me, address the need of students. So I, I hear, I hear what you're saying about, about that, but it really doesn't, it doesn't change anything other than just saying that we're not going to, like, it's not called expulsion, right? So like, does that make sense, Ben? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to kind of put this in the sense of, to me, like, expellable offenses from our school district are going to be those that cause severe harm to people, right? Being non-compliant in our school district means that we have a student who's crying out for help and support. So there are layers of support in there that need to happen for that student. So rather than walking through a disciplinary process to get to that place, we're putting those supports in if, if there, if there's multiple infractions. Does that make sense?
Yeah, uh, thank you for clarifying and thanks for putting this together.
Yeah, and, and thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions in regards to the middle school? Carla?
I have a few. Anna, thank you so much for sharing. I just had a few follow-up questions. I, I want to make sure I'm clear on the periods. It's periods two through five that are going to be the math and ELA blocks, right? Those four open sections in the mornings. I, I think you're muted, Anna.
Give me just a moment to pull up the schedule in front of me. There are, in the schedule, there are blocks throughout the day. It, depending on the grade level, but there are consistent blocks in the morning. And part of the reason for those consistent blocks are the need for us to support accelerated math classes. And so that provides a common period for that. So there is those, the alignment during that second, those, those periods is important to some of the coursework that we offer students.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to figure out where the, I don't know where I formed this impression, that the ELA and the math blocks would be like two periods, right? And that they're going to be stacked together, like four periods in a row for math and ELA. Do I have that wrong?
Um, so in grade four, basic, grade four and five, if, if students come in in the morning, they're with their, they're with their homeroom teachers in a math or ELA block in the morning, which has been consistent practice.
Oh, I see. I was looking at grade four and five. Okay, so grades six and up, you have them.
Yeah, grade six and up. So grade seven has, um, has the, the same schedule, but then they break for music. And so, but in between periods, so if you're looking at, like, I guess, there'll be transition that happens between periods three and four for seventh grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. And then the other two grade levels, six and eight, are moving to a specials class at that time.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to make sure I, I grasp a little bit. Okay, thank you. I, I love the change in the dress and attire and I really appreciate that you gave attention to that. That's a really excellent change. It just puts a smile on my face. So thank you for dealing with that. I, I, you know, I, I have like deep concerns about restorative practices happening in classrooms with teachers who may not have adequate training around it. And because restorative practices can be really, like what Ben's saying, kind of disruptive of teaching, right? So I'm sitting here, I, I don't know that you have answers today, but I'm asking myself whether teachers, especially since we have a lot of new staff, are going to have adequate training to be able to implement, you know, meaningful and wise restorative practices in classrooms while continuing to teach, right? Are they going to have SEL staff support to do that? You know, I, I know the phrase gets used a lot, but it's, you know, it's a pretty rich concept that requires a lot of support and development. And so I, I sort of picture like teachers putting a group of kids in a corner together, like uninitiated teachers and saying, restore. You know, I want to make sure if you can, that you put that training in place. You have SEL staff in place, which hopefully, you know, if we have two counselors, we'll be able to, to make sure those practices are implemented wisely. And I, I do very much worry that if you're going to push that practice into the classroom, it's going to be really disruptive of learning. For teachers, especially in ELA and math, who are already doing a whole bunch of new work with curriculum. So I just want to express my concern about that to you and hope that you, you know, are able to get teachers the PD and support they need. Yeah, being overwhelmed.
If I could, if I could just address that, so I, I want to state the fact that I've, like, I have also been trained in restorative practices. And yes, like the kind of restorative practices that happen when, when harm is caused. And you're trying to repair harm with students and families is the kind of work that would not happen within the classroom, right? Like, that's the kind of work that happens in a more small and controlled setting with an SEL support staff or, you know, with somebody who has higher level of training to support that work. Restorative practices within a school setting aren't necessarily just always about repairing harm. A lot of it is a community building work that I would see teachers implementing. And I have been working, like, as, as I stated, there are two outside consultants that would come in and we would have staff fully trained in concepts by October. And so those two trainings would take place at the beginning and start of the school year. And a lot of those practices would be very, the training would be very hands-on so that teachers could experience that and have opportunities to be able to do it. And there would be ongoing coaching support for teachers and staff around that. So I agree with you. It could be a very dangerous practice if it's not implemented well. And in terms of the time that it takes as well as really thinking that. So the concept of moving towards restorative practices in the school is an ongoing development. And it really, to me, is about the first steps that we take to not exclude students from, from the learning environment as much as possible. And to really make students be a part of the community and to tend to the needs that their behavior is communicating. So, um, I thank you for that feedback. And yes, I, I agree with you. You are 100% correct that it is work that needs development with it.
That's all I got. Thank you so much, Anna.
Thank you, Carla.
Okay, do we have anything else? The only one thing that I want to say is, depending on what happens, I really, I, I think I had a conversation with you, Anna. I would not hold detention to be, don't take it out of the, the equation or the conversation. I don't necessarily like people, uh, the teach, uh, students getting recess taken away because that is just a release for the day, in the middle of the day. But consequences of having, consequences of having something like, you will have to stay after school. You will have to do Saturday detention. If it gets to the point, I just don't want that to be taken off. And that is just a suggestion from me, not that you have to do it. It's just one of those things I think should stay and in the conversation at least.
Well, I appreciate that, Tamika. Can I just say something? I know I'm wasting time here, but I just want to tell you, I'm not a huge fan of detention. My husband said this, so I'm going to share it. He said, if every time there's a fight in the school and people stand around and watch, you tell every student who watched, you're going to go to detention and you're going to get some learning around social responsibility and community. And everyone had to go, you know, I think you're going to see a significant reduction in people standing around other people fight. It's an interesting idea.
And, and that, and Carla, again, that's.
Yeah.
Where you're coming from, I have a different point of view on it. I, I have seen it work. I have seen it not work. So nobody has the exact cure-all for any of this stuff. So this is.
It's hard.
Kind of giving suggestions and opening dialogue to conversation. That's all.
Thank you, Tamika. I just, I want to add that, that in the, in the handbook, the one area that we do use Saturday school or detention is if students are not attending their classes during the school day. So if you're skipping class, then making up that time in an after-school or Saturday format. Because that fits very nicely with the, with, with the offense, right? So like, you're wasting or taking away from your learning time. I want you to have that learning time back. And I feel like that's an area of, of, of where that, that consequence really fits in. But yes, thank you for that. I appreciate the, the willingness to say, like, we have to do what we need to do and we want to do it responsibly.
Anything else? All right, then, we will go to, I think, Department of, or Department of Number Three, the President's Update. I will not have this every time. I just think this is kind of, but we have a couple of things we want to do. We have sent out a Google, a doodle or whatever on the hearing on teacher salary. And nobody returned it or only one or two people returned it. So let's try it again. We're going to, and there's two things. We can either try it again. Or there was a, a kind of idea that on the, was it 11th? Was it just say yes or no? Okay, on the 11th, that day is when parents are coming in to do registration and different things. And what we can do is set up a, a survey in the library and have conversations and get feedback as people are coming in. So this is just a suggestion about teacher salary, like as they're, they're going through. We're asking them to come in, take a survey. Or we can still try to have a hearing. Either way, it's up to you guys to decide which way you want to go or which route. But if we're going to do the hearing route, you have to answer the doodle.
The pa- the positive on the 11th, the positive on the 11th would be a lot of foot travel. So I, there's an opportunity that we might hear from more people because they're all coming for that other event. So that's just, I'm good with whatever way you guys want to do it, but that's just my thought on the 11. People are coming anyways.
So let's discuss. What, what do you want to do? I, we have to do something. We have to have a conversation because we voted on to do that. Well, it was a majority vote to do that. So, um, which one do you want to go about? Do you want to try to set another meeting and we'll put a doodle out again? But which way do you want to go? Ben, Andy, Carla, which way you guys want to go?
I, I don't have strong feelings, Tamika.
Doodle again. Yeah.
Tamika, I recall that the idea of a. Uh, Tamika, I recall that the idea of a hearing was yours, if I recall.
I know, I brought it I didn't vote for it. When people on the board wanna bring something up, I always bring, I will bring it up to you. For I did not like it, I did not vote for it, but that's
I'm going with the flow, I filled out the original doodle, uh, or Google or Oodle, whatever it is, I'll fill it out again when I get it, assuming I can access my email, which so far I have successfully done for like sixteen days in a row, so, you know, I'm easy.
So, so we will uh put out the doodle again, let's try to do this. We'll figure out some dates, I know um, we are trying to do a lot of stuff in August, um. Which we will keep going, but we will send that out, this is just a discussion item. Secondly, um, the next thing I have is discussion for Ann to come in. She's just gonna, I want her to present to the board what she's capable of doing and be full disclosure of how much it's gonna be. And what she would be working on when it comes to the board and and the superintendent and just kind of working that through. Um, and then we can, we we can set on, you know, we wanna do but it's more of a full disclosure, we're not gonna try to figure out, you know. Uh, we we want everybody to know what we're paying for, I guess. And um, you know, some of the uh matrix of how we get to where we need to go. So that is just also, um, that will be probably on the next um board meeting. And lastly, the WASB um policy work timeline. Um, Allison, did you and get the answer to my question, but when will we be having?
Sorry, yeah, I talked to um Ben Neenhouse, and I just let him know he was out of the office today. I emailed him, we're playing phone tag, and I let him know that ideally, we'd like to have the templates by the nineteenth. Worst case scenario, we'd like to buy the thirty-first, so I'm still waiting to hear back from him. But I just let him know that we're looking for a template for every single one of those policies, so that we can then schedule something to go through them as a board. So I will let you know as soon as I know.
And then, because we we took that extra time to do that, we're gonna have to have our Saturday meeting um, for this policy work, either the, and we were looking at, hold on, I gotta bring the calendar back up. Um. This will be most likely, please mark on your calendar, September tenth. Um, because we don't wanna do it on the third, because that's a holiday weekend. But we do need to get this implemented, and I'm I'm thinking between the third, the tenth or the seventeenth, that gives us you know, a week or two to read over it. So the tenth or seventeenth, please mark down, and we will send a doodle to mark down which day is going to be. It's probably gonna be from nine to four on a Saturday. It's a retreat to to do policy work. If we can get it done, and we all read what we have to read and have our suggestions on it, this is how it will work most likely. We're gonna have to make a motion to suspend our um, our policy that says we have to read policies three times or whatever, we're gonna have to make a motion to suspend that. We're gonna go through each policy, that's why we really need to read them. The ones that take more than ten minutes or fifteen minutes to discuss, because we have some back and forth. Some may be really great, and we just wanna get it, you know, it's it's perfect for us. Those are the ones we wanna get through, vote on them and get them in place, and then discuss, depending on what the timeline is, discuss the other ones. Some may have to go to policy, because it's something that really needs a little of a better in-depth conversation or look into, and some may just be a a majority vote. Because, again, all of us are not gonna agree on how to do policy, because we all have different personalities and different things that we look at, but then it'll go to a majority vote. So that's kind of how we're gonna roll with that. Do you have any questions, suggestions, anything like that? Or is is everyone okay with the way this is, this will possibly roll? And then again, this could change a little bit, you know, or if one of you guys have a a different way or a idea that we should do this, let, you know, let me know and and we'll, you know, we'll figure it out. But I think this is just gonna be purely concentrating on if we do the governance and anything that we have out of uh, that we have that's out of compliance. This will also um help the administration know what they're supposed to do and the rules that they should abide by. And it'll also help the board with what they're doing and how they're buying by. So we're all becoming um a little more uh accountable for what's in our 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 policy books and who to hold accountable to when things go wrong. So, any uh questions, concerns, comments on that? Is everybody in agreement with kind of what the plan is? Okay, then we are on number four, visitor participation. Visitor may speak on any non-agenda item at this time. State law and or board policy may limit the school board's response. We have, Ms. Katie, go ahead.
Hello, sorry, I had to figure out how to unmute. Um, I was just curious if the district was considering doing a booster clinic for the five to eleven-year-olds who got their vaccine at school back in December.
Yes, so we are doing on the eleventh, and we're gonna have a big communication that comes out on August first with so much information. But as part of the savor the date, um, Novir will be there, and they'll be offering um DTAP, they'll be offering boosters. They'll be offering um initial vaccines for people that want them. So they'll, we'll do a survey of families to see what the interest is, so they know how much to bring, but yes, absolutely.
Oh, awesome, thank you so much, that was it.
Katie, thank you, any other questions? Any other statements? Who is this?
I don't have a hand to raise.
Go ahead. A little bit closer, but we can hear you.
Okay, hold on for a second.
We'll give him a couple of minutes to I don't know if you know, you went on mute again, though.
You guys hear me okay now?
There we go.
Okay, um, real quick, one thing on some of your communications. You, I think you guys alluded to like a doodle or a Google sent out on like a teacher salary survey thing. Um, I just, we get three, we get emails sent to three different accounts in our household alone, plus Infinite Campus. And that stuff's not getting out.
No, no, that's for the board.
Okay, all right, just And then, when you guys do send some of the Google documents or the Google surveys you sent out, if you do not have a personal Gmail account, you cannot fill some of them out, because of the way you have the settings set frequently. Um, because if it's set to automatically collect your email, if you do not have a Gmail account, you can't respond.
Actually, that was, I know on the um bus ridership ship survey, that was just a mistake. You can just, you can, yeah, you can change the setting so that it just says anybody with a link. So I apologize that that
I just wanted to make sure, because our kids don't take the bus, and I wanted to let you know, so they don't just sit down at our house, yeah.
It never fails, you go through the whole communication, send it out, and you you didn't click the button.
I do it all the time, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Anyone else? Well, I just wanna thank us for having, uh, I think it was a pretty productive meeting. We got most of it questions answered, but we have a lot of work to do, so we're just gonna keep plugging along. Um, just wanna say, um, Allison, have a very safe trip, she's off to Iceland.
Send us pictures, make us jealous.
Yes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
That's a motion by Ben Wen, second by Carla Pennington Cross, I think I like saying your hopeful name. But it's not as close, Ben Wen, Ben Wen, Ben Wen. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries for the zero, and we are adjourned into our next board meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
See you.
Uh, Andy, did you have something to say? Okay, bye y'all.